The whole board meeting tonight. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Lander?
Here.
Mr. Jerpy?
Here.
Ms. Colvin, is that not yet arrived? Mr. Long is next then. Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Here. Uh, Mr. Jerpy, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. We have two topics tonight. The first one is the Vision 2026 Dashboard Metrics and the Illinois School Report Card. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so Mrs. Murphy's going to take the, uh, the board through your annual update on the score report cards. Um, she'll, uh, I'm sure remind you of this, but, but just a reminder, this information being presented tonight is not officially yet live on public, uh, report cards. It will go live, uh, I believe next week. Uh, it'll, it'll move out live. But, uh, really, this is the recap of, uh, what I would describe as kind of the heart of your dashboard. Right? So the, the goals you set for the organization, especially in the learning acceleration space, those that are monitored, uh, by the, the state get reported at this time every year. So, uh, really from a data perspective, um, certainly, well, not the only indicator, uh, these, this is kind of your, your critical indicators of the, the progress that you're making, especially in the learning acceleration space. So, um, without any more of an introduction, uh, excited to let Mrs. Murphy bring this update to you.
Good evening. Um, it's certainly a pleasure to give this update. There's, um, a lot to celebrate tonight. So I've been looking forward to this evening with the Board of Education. Um, I always start this presentation by giving the board a review of the difference between the IAR assessment and FastBridge. And so this year I actually made this table, um, to really outline, uh, the differences between these two assessments. So the IAR assessment, our state assessment, is a criterion referenced assessment, which means students are assessed on grade level standards. So if you're in fifth grade, the test is made up of fifth grade reading standards if you're, or fifth grade math standards. Um, that is all reported out on proficiency levels. So if you get 92% of that assessment correct, that is correlated to one of five proficiency levels. FastBridge is a norm reference test, and this means that the item bank is grade level content. It is content that comes before your grade level. It is content that comes after your grade level. It's adaptive. So depending on how you answer the first set of questions, it moves up and down. So you could be seeing the same item bank, uh, for a while, dependent on how you answer those questions. Your results are put, um, in a bell curve and correlated to the norms of the study of the assessment, and those are reported out in a national percentile. So those norms do change throughout the year. So when a student takes the assessment in the fall, the winter, and the spring, there is a different set of norms. And it's also dependent on your grade level. Um, students take FastBridge three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. Students take IAR one time a year. The IAR assessment results come to us about, um, lately they've been coming back to us much more quickly. Um, we've been getting them in about six weeks. Um, the FastBridge results are available to our educators 24 hours after a student takes that assessment. Um, really big difference is IAR has a combination of multiple choice and open-ended items. So for the ELA assessment, our students write essays. Um, for the math assessment, our students have multiple, um, open-ended types of responses. FastBridge is completely just a multiple choice question, um, type of test. And then the purpose is, it really serves different purposes. So as I said before, IAR measures the Illinois learning standards at that grade level, and it drives curricular and instructional improvement, whereas FastBridge is really rooted in, um, serving as a support for our MTSS system, and it serves as a universal screener and provides progress monitoring. When I say it serves as a universal screener as a reminder, um, it is a screener, um, for dyslexia as well. And so, um, when students do take that early reading or A-reading assessment, it's measuring risk for reading. So, um, you're going to see a lot of data tonight, and I'm always anchoring it back to 2019 because that's before the pandemic, and our Vision 2026 strategic plan is really rooted in learning acceleration after the pandemic. So I have a couple of demographic, um, information, pieces of information here for three special populations. So we have seen an increase in our low-income population. When you look at our comparable school districts, we actually have the largest low-income population of our, of the comparables. And the next closest district to us of our comparables is Barrington, and it's 11% lower than District 200. Um, our ML population has increased during that time period, and our, um, IEP population has actually decreased. So I'm going to take you through the first guiding question, and that is all looking at our results for K8 for ELA and reading. So this slide is the first of many that I get to present that are really a celebration. And so this is the percentage of students in grades three through eight that met or exceeded on the IAR ELA assessment. So you can see those pre-pandemic results, and that really nice increase where we now have 65% of our students meeting or exceeding on that ELA assessment. Um, I also have information here by subgroup. So this first set of slides are those, um, special populations, so low-income, IEP, ML. And you can see that, um, change in results for those special populations from 2019, and then I included last year, 2023, and then this year. Um, I do want to dive into, um, these, uh, three populations a little bit. And so when we look at our low-income population, um, that is the second-largest subgroup that we do have in our school district next to White. Um, and when we think about our low-income students, it's also important to know that, um, of this group that took the IAR, 47% of those students have entered our school district after kindergarten. Um, our IEP population, um, we have some options for that assessment. And so students, um, who have an IEP would take either the IAR assessment or the DLM. Now, it's important to know that that DLM assessment is tied to the essential elements, a different set of learning standards for, um, students with significant cognitive disabilities. But the state limits school districts to only 1% of your population being able to take the DLM. And when I talk about 1%, I am talking about third grade all the way up through high school, and I'm talking about our students that are out placed too. So we have about, um, 60 students that took the DLM, um, and about, um, 30% of those students are out of district placements. So, um, so majority of our students are taking the grade-level IAR assessment. And then our multilingual learners, um, you have to remember with that population too, even if you are brand-new to the country with very limited English, you are taking that grade-level assessment for English and math. Um, here you see the subgroup results by race, um, again, always anchoring in 2019, last year, and 2023. Um, again, I want to highlight two priority subgroups. The black subgroup and Hispanic subgroup are two that we consider priority for closing achievement gaps. Um, when you look at our black subgroup and our Hispanic subgroup, there are all, some other compounding factors that I think are important to consider. Um, there is some language here, mobility, um, is also, and income. So of our, um, black population that took the IAR here, 80% of those students are also considered low-income, and 60% of those students entered our school district after kindergarten. Um, and, uh, and 33% of that population as well speak another language. Um, for our Hispanic subgroup, nearly every one of them was either, um, is either a multilingual learner or a former multilingual learner. And, um, also a large percentage of that group as well enter our school district after kindergarten too. Um, so here I'm showing you specifics to the dashboard. As you know, the dashboard breaks out, um, student achievement by grades three through five and six through eight. So here you'll see those results for third through fifth grade. Once again, huge celebration on the increases that we're seeing here. And as a reminder, um, that nice increase is only after that one first year of implementation of bookworms. Um, I like showing this because it has the breakdown, um, of performance by proficiency level. So the red represents level one, which means students did not meet on the assessment. The orange represents, um, partially met. A three is approaching, and then the two shades of gray, green are considered meets or exceeds. And so you'll see that, um, I've laid out here for you, um, third-grade data for 23, 24, right next to each other, fourth and, um, fifth. Um, I really do want to point out that the fifth-grade data, as students are exiting, really, um, is a big celebration because it really looks very strong as they're moving into the middle school years. Your dashboard also specifically calls out sixth grade, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And, um, this is, once again, this was a big celebration last year. You may remember, we were looking at this and very pleased. Once again, this, um, is another celebration at the strong results from our middle school with 67% of students meeting or exceeding. And the same layout right here with the percentage of students that meet those proficiency bands in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I'd just draw your attention to the very strong results, uh, at eighth grade. So for eighth grade, this meant that our freshmen, um, entering into, um, North and South this year, we had more students, um, enrolled in A-level courses this year because of these, um, strong results. And then this is actual visual of what your dashboard now looks like. It has been updated to reflect the most recent, um, state data. And so up at the top is what it looked like as of last week, and then on the bottom there is what it looks like now with, um, 60% in grades three through five and 67% in grade six through eight. Um, a big part of the report card is also the IAR growth percentile. And this is calculated by looking at, um, each individual student's growth year over year. And then each individual student's growth is calculated to can, to come up with an average for the school and also the school district. I know there was a, a question about exactly how this was calculated. So I thought, I added that image there because I thought that was helpful to see each individual student and then the collection of student and their score year over year. So, um, the growth percentile actually makes up a very large component of the summative designation, which we're going to talk about later. But, um, District 200's, um, growth percentile, not percentage, percentile, um, this year is at the 55th percentile. And then you'll see to the left there, I put the scale that, um, ISBE has. So this is considered above-average growth. So I, because the growth percentile plays a large role on the school report card, and we now have trend data for this, I've actually added this tile to your dashboard. Um, and so, and I, um, when someone goes onto the dashboard and clicks more information, they'll see past growth percentiles as well. But, um, here you'll see that's 55th percentile. So I'm going to change gears now, and I'm going to talk about FastBridge. And so as a reminder, the, uh, main usage of FastBridge is to serve as a universal screener and to support the implementation of MTSS. When I say the term MTSS, and I know we talked about this a lot at our last board meeting, but as a reminder, MTSS is that framework for school improvement. And so all students receive Tier One instruction, and that is looking to serve, um, 80% of your student population without needing additional help. And when we are, we use our FastBridge data, um, we are looking at students who score between the 30th and the 99th percentile as being able to be successful in Tier One without needing additional supports. Tier Two, um, generally you're looking for 5% to 15% of a students, of a school population. And, um, these are students who need additional support. And you can see that students that fall between that 11th and 29th percentile are considered for Tier Two. And Tier Three are the students who need the most significant amount of support. Those are students that are at the 10th percentile and lower. So these, um, visualization here are tied exactly to MTSS. And so what you can see are the bands of K1, 2, 5, and 6, 8. And you can see the percentage of our students from spring that fell into each of those bands. And so, um, when you look at the yellow and the red, um, this, we, this is the conversations that we're now having in the school district is about what do our interventions look like for students who, um, receive those for Tier Two and Tier Three? We are working on, um, strengthening those. But we are also continuing to work on how are we supporting all students that are in, um, Tier One? So that's been a majority of our work is around Tier One with implementation of bookworms. And now at the middle school, piloting new materials there. You can see, um, this same, um, data visualization for our special populations for low-income, IEP, and multilingual learners. And then here you can see by race. On your dashboard, we do report out the percentage of students that are at or above the 50th percentile. Um, and we report that out by these bands, K1, 2, 5, and 6, 8. Um, that, I, here I'm showing you what that, those results look like for low-income, IEP, multilingual learners, and then by race. Um, so the dashboard metrics have been updated for 2024. I'm going to spend some time talking about these in a moment. Um, so that, you can see what it was in '23, what it is on your dashboard now for '24, and the growth, that's fall to spring growth, what it looked like last year and this year. So when we received the results for IAR in early summer and we're looking at the FastBridge results in early summer, we were certainly, I mean, I was on, you know, cloud nine about the IAR results and how fantastic those look. But then when we looked at our FastBridge results, we were puzzled because those also didn't increase. Those, in fact, went the opposite direction. And after a lot of conversations and thoughts about this, something that has come to us is the challenge we face with the number of, um, assessments that our students take between the day they come back from spring break and the last day of school. So they are taking, um, IAR, they are taking FastBridge, and some students are taking the science test, which is called ISA. And from the day they return from spring break until the last day of school, there's 37 days of school, but students could be taking between nine and 11 tests. And so, um, we think that plays a factor in terms of, especially with FastBridge being the second group of tests that our students took, that, um, test fatigue played a factor in that. Um, we, uh, we have our testing window set up for this year too, but we're actually, as a team, looking at that and seeing what, um, options we do have to make some adjustments in that so we don't hit the same level of fatigue. I also want to say as well, um, when we've had the opportunity to test our students in the fall in the exact same cohorts of students. So our current second through fifth graders have scored 4% higher than the spring, and the same cohort of students that sit in middle school now have scored 7% higher than the spring. And generally, you talk about a summer slide, but here we were seeing, not a summer slide, we were actually seeing the opposite of it. So, um, this is why we've really landed on this idea of like, we have to look at our testing windows and consider the testing fatigue, what, what that played in these results. Um, so I'm going to round out ELA here. Um, there are celebrations, once again, those IAR results being higher than pre-pandemic outcomes is a celebration. But I also want to say, our K1 early reading data did increase. Um, this was a big focus in our school district was on the foundational skills instruction and supporting our staff. Even after the winter, we intervened inter, um, immediately, worked with our K1 teams on areas that we saw, um, were not as high, and we're really pleased with the nice growth that we saw after one year of implementation of bookworms. Work plan focuses, most of this follows under the MTSS umbrella. So for Tier One, we're continuing to support the implementation of bookworms. We're supporting our sixth through eighth middle school in utilizing, well, they're engaged in a pilot of new, um, instructional materials. We're looking, we are, receive training and are implement, working on implementation of bookworms intensive for Tier Two, Tier Three. Um, we're going to start looking at our middle school interventions. And, um, Mrs. Hanson is going to engage in a review of our resource programming and PISA programming. So, move on to the, also I'll move into our second guiding questions here, which is all about the math results in K8. So once again, same visual where you can see, um, IAR results for meet succeeds for third through eighth grade from 2019 to 2024, we are seeing an uptick here. We finally have surpassed pre-pandemic results in the area of math. Once again, here you're going to see those results by subgroup. This is the special populations. Um, I'm pleased to see that the results this year are, are trending up from 2019. Our staff is getting much more comfortable with the implementation of IM. Our elementary staff are in year three. I'm hearing a lot of, um, positive, so about, from our staff and how much more comfortable they feel. And our middle school staff is in the second year of implementation. Um, here you see those subgroup data by race. Once again, the two priority subgroup, uh, priority subgroups on this, um, slide, we're seeing, um, increases with both of those, particularly the black subgroup, um, in this, for this group. Third through fifth grade, um, we are at the same results we were in pre-pandemic with 54% of our students meeting or exceeding. And then once again, here's the visual by proficiency level for third, fourth, and fifth grade. I am going to draw your attention to fifth grade. Fifth grade is the area where our schools are focused on this year. So every one of our elementary buildings has a very robust school improvement plan around fifth grade. Here you see the results for sixth through eighth grade. That's a really nice increase that we're, um, seeing emerging from the pandemic. Um, I do want to highlight too, I've been hearing more from our middle schools about, um, how they feel like the fifth graders coming to them this year are much more prepared than they have been last few years. So we're seeing that increase in the data, but our staff are saying that too. And we've also heard this from our, um, high school staff too. So here you'll see, um, again, those, that same rainbow, um, visualization here of proficiency levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our, all four middle schools this year have school improvement plans very focused on sixth grade. We, um, have analyzed that data, and, um, we recognized we had some pacing challenges last year with the first year of implementation. Our coaches and Scott Chatterster, um, have made some adjustments that we think will lead to some better outcomes in sixth grade this year, along with our school improvement work. And here you'll see the results that now sit on your dashboard, um, with 54% of students in grades three through five meeting exceeding and 44 in six through eight. In terms of the IAR growth percentile, it's, um, it's an uptick from last year. It's, um, at the 51st percentile this year. Um, this is a goal that I have for the district is that we move into that above-average category for growth in mathematics. So once again, on your dashboard, I've added that tile for both ELA and math for the growth percentile. So shifting over on the, um, FastBridge side of the data, so this again is that, those visualizations from an MTSS lens where you can see, um, these are, these are great numbers where we have, you know, 80% or close to 80% of our students falling within that, um, Tier One range. And the distribution of, um, Tier Two and Tier Three really fall right in line with what, um, is recommended for MTSS. But we recognize, even especially here when you look at this data for our subgroups, we recognize we have work to do, um, in our, in our interventions. And, um, this is one of the work plan areas this year is to secure instructional materials, especially at the elementary level, for our interventions in math. And so here's that, um, data by race. So moving into what sits on the dashboard for FastBridge is the percentage of students at or above the 50th percentile. Here you see that broken out for K1, 2, 5, 6, 8, by the special populations, and, uh, by race. And then here is how those metrics have been updated on your dashboard, where we didn't see the same, um, downward trend in the area of math, math for FastBridge that we had seen for reading. Um, and where the adjustment to the growth score too, just an uptick by 1%. So celebrations, we are really pleased that the IAR results are, um, above pre-pandemic results. They're trending in the right direction. Um, work this year is, when I say utilize the Work this year is, when I say utilize the District 200 Meaningful Assessment Practices Framework to Enhance Collective Teacher Efficacy, let me explain that in layman's terms. First of all, the, the assessment practice framework is actually hanging up right over here. The Ed Services Team worked to develop that. That has best practices and assessment, and our school improvement teams are using the suggestions that fall under evidence and collaboration to guide their work. Our school improvement teams are very focused on all school achievement in math, but very focused on fifth grade and sixth grade because that was the areas where we knew we needed to have some more focused work for better outcomes. And then I spoke to piloting the Tier Two materials for math interventions. Okay, moving into high school outcomes. Freshmen on track is a metric that we've, we've had on a dashboard for a very long time. This is a state metric. As a reminder, the state definition is what we use. It's the percentage of first-time ninth graders who have at least five course credits without failing more than 0.5 course, and this is in the core subject areas. So we're really holding steady with this metric. Advanced coursework, our metric captures the percent of students that earn a C or better in one of these areas. So an AP course, we have 22 of those. A dual-credit course, as a reminder, in 2019, we had three dual-credit courses between our two high schools. We have 16 starting this year. And then industry-recognized credentials. We don't have many students that meet the criteria through the industry-recognized credentials. Those are offered through TCD right now about, but we had a few students. For years when I presented this, I just continued to say we were at 70%, we were at 70%, we were at 70%, and we are finally really ticking above that. This is the metric that I presented at every Sharper Focus meeting that we went to at all of our buildings, and people are really excited that we have so many of our seniors that are accessing an advanced course and earning a C or better.
So a question about the metric. Is this of the students who took an advanced class, the percentage getting a C or better?
All seniors.
Okay, so it's percentage of the total population?
It is.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Melissa, do you know how, what, what number of that 81% achieved that by the dual credit?
Yes, I do. Let me see, I have those notes right here. It was an uptick this year, but it, I'm going to put my finger on it if I can. I don't, I can't find the exact metric, the exact numbers right now, but what I'm going to tell you is it was an uptick this year with dual credit, but it did not take away from AP. The AP numbers just went down 2%. So we weren't really grabbing Peter to pay Paul, we were capturing more students with dual credit. When I get the exact numbers, I'll come back and give those to you. So here you're going to see the percentage of students that met this metric for each of our special populations, and I'm comparing to 2019. So you can see a nice increase there with each of these different special populations. I think it's a huge success that 37% of our graduating seniors that are multilingual learners are accessing this. This is where, you know, our students that are enrolled in TCD are getting all of those dual-credit opportunities as well. And here you'll see those results by race groups too. Really, really nice increase for our subgroup populations since 2019. Definitely a point of pride for our school district. Math and English proficiency for this metric is reporting out seniors that meet the proficiency criteria as outlined by the State Board of Education. So this criteria is to be able to enter into a credit-bearing course post-secondary. You can meet that criteria through a course or through an exam score. So the courses could be an AP course, a dual-credit course, transitional course, or Algebra II for math, we don't have the equivalent for English, or it can be one of those scores with ACT, SAT, or an AP exam earning a three or higher. Dual-credit English, as a reminder to the board, you approved that course, the college composition course, two years ago. Last year was the very first year we implemented college composition in our high schools on both sides of town. Transitional English is a course that we are implementing for the first time this year. That is the course that targets students who could be at risk of not being able to take a credit-bearing course post-secondary. So again, another point of pride. We are one of two school districts in DuPage County offering that course right now. So ELA proficiency really jumped up, and a lot of this has to do with an increase in SAT scores for the class of 24, and more students were taking the ACT and meeting that proficiency, and the largest contributor to the increase is from the dual-credit college composition course. Here you see the difference in outcomes for our subgroup populations. So you'll see it by the three special populations, and then racial groups as well. So certainly happy to see those increases, but our high school school improvement plans are continuing to be focused on what we can do around those priority subgroups to continue to see this acceleration. Math proficiency, we've held steady for two years now with 80% of students meeting that proficiency criteria for the class of 24. You can see we had some adjustment here though for some special populations. So I emphasize that the school improvement plans at elementary very focused on fifth and sixth grade math. School improvement plans at our high school are very focused on Algebra I. And the reason they're very focused on Algebra I is it's very hard to be successful with Algebra II. We did a lot of study in terms of our students who didn't meet this criteria by not passing Algebra II, and we studied and saw that they earned a D in Algebra I. And so our high schools are very focused in on students, giving students more support and monitoring progress of our students that are enrolled in Algebra I this year. Continuing to monitor students in the other courses, but a heavy focus on Algebra I to put them on a solid foundation. Here you see results for four-year graduation rate. Few statistics to give you on this one. So the dropout rate for District 200 is 1%. I know I got a question about how this is calculated. There are a few things to know about this. The state monitors for us, and what we have to report is anyone who enters into our school as a ninth grader and any time after, we're having to report if they graduated or not. So we have students that move away and choose not to enroll in another school district. We, that impacts our results. We also have students that enter in sometime in that four years and have insufficient credits. That impacts our results, especially thinking of our multilingual students that are refugees. And then we have our students that are going to continue on in our transition program and continue to get special education services. They also don't count as a graduate in four years. That's going to change though. With the 2025 report card that gets issued, it's also, it's going to call out the percentage of students that are continuing on for transition services, so that's actually better reflected for each school district. So that's a good change. Here you'll see those adjustments to your dashboard metrics. So we're, we're capturing again, graduation rate, freshmen on track, the percentage of students taking an advanced course, ELA proficiency, math proficiency. I have one last metric that I have added that's new this year because career pathways is a big part of our strategic plan. I felt like it should be captured in some way on the dashboard, and to do that, I've added this tile that is called the number of students earning a pathway endorsement. To earn a pathway endorsement, it's, quite a lot of things go into it. So you have to have two dual-credit courses, you, and earn a C or better. You have to have met that high school English and math proficiency. You have to have participated in 60 hours of work-based learning. And so in the state of Illinois, 2,422 high school seniors earned that pathway endorsement. In District 200, we had 30 students earn it this past year, and the year before we had 19. So there's now that tile on your dashboard, and when you dive into it, you'll be able to see year over year how many of our students are getting that pathway endorsement. Right now, it's all students that are in that education pathway, but after this year, I believe we'll have some that are in different pathways getting it. So in terms of rounding out our high school metrics, the celebrations are many. We had nice increases for students completing advanced coursework, ELA proficiency, the career pathway endorsement, and then we're, we're holding steady with some other metrics that have good results in terms of the work plan. Very focused on math proficiency, especially around success in Algebra I, and then implementing the transitional English course. Couple of other metrics I just want to highlight for you that will be on the report card. The annual summative designation. This is calculated, well, before I talk about how it's calculated, there are five different areas or designations. So I'm going to explain the outliers first and then come back to the ones in the middle. So exemplary schools are the highest performing 10% of schools in the state, and then comprehensive and intensive are the other outlier. So these are the lowest performing 5% of schools. Intensive is a new category because it means you were in the comprehensive group and you didn't get out of it. Targeted means you have a subgroup that is performing in the bottom 5%, and then everybody else falls into commendable. It's calculated by multiple metrics. So this is the visual for all of those components that get factored together for elementary and middle school. There's academic indicators, and then there's school quality and success indicators. Growth is the largest component of this, ELA growth, math growth. I know I got a question about the indicators that are in italics that are not going to be implemented till 2025, and what impact that could have on our summative designation. I don't believe that it will have a negative impact for our school district, but I am going to say, there's not a lot of information out there yet about the business rules of how these are going to be calculated, but I don't anticipate in looking at the data for those right now that that should have an impact for District 200. High school, the largest percentage of that summative designation is graduation, four, five, and six-year graduation rate. So another celebration for District 200 is we have more schools that have earned the exemplary status than ever before. We now have six schools. Back in 2019, we had two. We now have six. So both high schools, two Title I elementary schools also were on the list. And then every other one of our schools is in the commendable category, and we have no one in targeted, comprehensive, or intensive. Last is the Equity Journey Continuum. This is something that is pretty new on the school report card. There are a lot of components that are factored together to report out equity in terms of a continuum, where it's large gaps all the way over to minimal gaps. These are all of the components that go into it. There are a lot. And so we fall into that area where it does put us in the large gaps for student learning, but I am going to say, the data for this is old. What's going to be on the school report card is from 2023. It's not reflective of the data I just shared with you. I do, I do want to just go back to some of the components because I know I have a, I got a question about how this is calculated and what we can do to move this metric. Some of these are challenging for us. Kids readiness, that's the assessment that our kindergarten teachers give that just basically reports out students readiness as kindergartners. So that one's tricky. The other one that is going to be hard to move is eighth graders enrolled in Algebra I. Certainly want students to, most students, you know, we have students that take this as an eighth grader, but a lot of students take it as a freshman. We want students to be enrolled in that course and be successful when it makes sense in their sequence. I'm really interested in seeing the adjustment on the advanced coursework. And areas that we aren't in large gaps, EL progress to proficiency, that's our strongest area. We are not, we do not have large gaps there. The other one where we aren't considered large gaps is our proficiency on IAR, SAT, Okay, I made it to the end.
Melissa, with that last slide, you said that 2024 data is not on the dashboard yet, is it?
2024 data for the Equity Journey Continuum on the Illinois School Report Card will not be reflected on this.
Okay, so is it coming or?
No, there's so much to calculate that they are an entire year behind.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, yeah.
All right, Ford. Okay.
Get it out of the way. Well, first off, like so much data, it's hard to digest it. My reaction is it's positive, it's good. So I guess one clarifying question that I gave you a heads up for, I want to ask about, but then two observations. I'll do the observations first, so can you go to slide 35? I think it's 35. Whoever's. So I hate these little charts, but I just realized maybe there's a different way to interpret them. So, and I know we're comparing sixth grade, you know, 23, 24, seventh grade, 23, but to me, the better, I'm asking, is a better way to look at this? How did the sixth graders do in 23 versus how they did the seventh graders did in 24?
Yeah, yeah.
That's truly the growth.
You're right.
If I look at the first and, the first column and the fourth column, so those sixth graders... so those sixth graders in 23 became seventh graders in 24.
Right.
The amount of green has really increased. So that to me, that shows there's actual growth over the course of the year. And then the same thing from the third column, seventh graders versus eighth graders in 24. A little growth, not as much, but but that's maybe is I guess that's maybe how I'm looking at this. Conversely, I'm looking at the third column, seventh graders in 23 versus eighth graders in 24. I'm looking at the orange and the red and it actually increased a little bit. So, you know, certainly the growth, but there's also like unfortunate growth on the bottom of that, too. So that's I guess that's kind of the way I'm looking. After a while, I finally learned how to interpret that, I think.
Yeah, I I think that isn't another way to look at this is the cohort adjustments, right? This is why I said a goal that I have for our organization is that IAR growth percentile where this is really like two slides over where I said it's at the 51st percentile. Because what you're outlining is exactly what that growth metric does. It it captures co like student to student growth, one year over the other. And that's why I really have the goal for the school district to move into that above-average growth.
So my second observation, if you go to, I think it's slide 20, and so now we're looking at FastBridge. And I'm going to compare reading versus math for the 50th percentile students. So you look at so K1, 2, 5, 6, 8, remember these numbers, 51, 58, 57, and read, right? And then you go to slide 43, I think. And then I'll be done with my data analysis. So here we are in math, 64, 68, 63, much higher scores in math, FastBridge. Is that because of the focus we had coming out of the pandemic? That we knew that we had to attack math or is it just, you know, is there a way to attribute that to something? Because it's it's significantly higher in math than it is in reading, those three numbers.
It could, it could be.
Yeah, okay. It was just, I always thought math was going to be lower scores. That's the impression, but this is clearly showing much more significant numbers.
I I think the the one I like to look at for the FastBridge is more the one that is the MTSS slide where it shows that we have 80% of students in the green. And there, I would like to say, because we have implemented a core instructional material and have consistency and we have been working at Tier One, I think we're seeing stronger results in Tier One overall.
And then I guess my my third more question and observation is, you know, clearly, when you look at the subgroups, some multilingual students is the biggest challenge. And you talked a little bit about that. And I saw that when I went to Hawthorne last year. And I mean, you've got kids that are learned, they're Russian kids in that particular instance, Russian kids learning English, but yet they're taking the IAR. I mean, can you talk about some of the unique challenges that those students face? Or what they're bringing into our schools that we are? And the challenge, I guess, maybe also the challenges that teachers have and how we address those pretty unique needs?
Yeah, so in terms of academic challenges, I do think it's important to remember, and this sits on our dashboard, we now have 87 languages represented in our schools. But we have one bilingual program, Spanish. So our students that speak Spanish are supported by staff that can speak their home language. But for the other 86 different languages, we don't have those kinds of supports. You have to remember, our multilingual learners come with the asset of being multilingual learners, but they are learning language and content at the same time. So they're growing both of those. We also know that we have a fairly large population of our multilingual learners that are refugees. So a lot of the work that Dr. Salagi does in supporting our students that might come with trauma, that plays a role in our schools. And then, too, I think about our multilingual learners. And then when they go home every evening and they may need help with their homework, they don't, they don't have, they may not have that same level of support that our students that are native English speakers have. That's just highlighting a couple.
So just another way back to beginning of my time on the board, my first adoptive school visit was the same school Hawthorne. And I remember talking to the principal at the time about the World Relief Program. And she was telling me, we got kids coming into third grade that literally never been in a school before. And it's, I mean, it's just, it was, I've never forgotten that.
Yeah, I had the good fortune last year of doing the shadow as student. And I specifically asked for a multilingual learner at Wheaton North to see what their school experience was like. And I got paired with a student that came here from Columbia. And after just one year, this student has excelled. This student is so motivated. This student was able to converse with me in English. But I also saw what that learning experience was like. It was a really powerful day for me as well to see their learning.
Thank you very much for reviewing all the data with us. I think my reaction, similar to Brad's, is at the aggregate, there's a lot of, you know, great wins there and good progress. Few questions. And I may be comparing metrics that aren't meant to be compared. If I look at IAR, which I know is based on a meets and exceeds standard, you know, ELA at 65 is ahead of math at 50. But then when I flip to the high school metrics, which I know are a proficiency measure, we're still at 65 for the English Language Arts side, whereas math is up to 80. And I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand what what do we think is driving that flip? Is it just the metrics are different or is there something in the the progress story?
Yeah. Let's see here. There is a slide that is called Math and English Proficiency. It's on page 28 in the booklet that I think is helpful for this conversation. The math proficiency at 80%, you have to remember, is also capturing Algebra II, whereas we don't have an equivalent to that on the English side. But I think it's also fair to say Algebra II is a very important metric for us to report out and measure and monitor for our high school students because it's considered a gateway to be successful in post-secondary. So the IAR assessment for math has a very high bar. Last year, when I went to CAC, I showed CAC some of the IAR math assessment items for fourth grade. And I think most of CAC felt like, wow, this is hard. So in a nutshell, IAR four, three through eight, challenging assessment, grade level content, open-ended items, high school, you're you're capturing a broader metric there.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Hey, Eric, one one to just, can I just add one little piece to that? Actually, I was thinking about this as you were asking the question where I think there is an interesting comparison that 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 could be kind of valid. If you look at that MTSS slide, right? So 80% of our students right now, based on those MTSS results, should be capable of accessing grade level instruction. And so if you think of that progressing up through the system, if we have students that are accessing grade level instruction and they're being successful in that, they're being appropriately supported where maybe the test score isn't quite over the proficiency level, but still working hard, still getting supported, that's a student that should progress up through Algebra II without a problem. So and those two metrics, again, I don't know that it's the one-to-one, but they're pretty close, right? In in number, right, where where you are.
And that actually ties into my my next question. So, you know, on the the reading side, looking at the the FastBridge, I know you state that the kind of the standard is 80% receiving the Tier One grade level. You know, we're notably below that. And is our belief that that is primarily because of the challenging demographics that you discussed? And that's, that's okay and to be expected given our demographic? Or is there a concern over that currently 76% that are receiving Tier One?
I think that when you look at those metrics, I think the K1 metric with 73% absolutely is capturing the large percentage of multilingual learners that we have at our primary levels. So to me, that makes sense to me. When you look at our six through eight data, I think that challenge that I talked to you about where there was the testing fatigue, our fall data is higher in the green at the middle school level. And I think when you look at second through fifth grade, you're also capturing in second grade there where students are still securing beginning early knowledge. And by the end of second grade, those scores look better. So I also think, yeah, multilingual learner and being able to read on grade level is also a compounding factor in this.
You mentioned the briefly, the ISA test. When will those results be available?
I need to talk to Julie Osimkowski about, well, for individual students or overall for the school district?
Overall, and then looking at the trend relative to prior years?
It'll be on the school report card.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, that's released in October. Our students did well.
Okay. And and progressed or have been consistently well?
I would have to go back and look year over year to answer that completely accurately. But the results were strong.
And then my my last kind of comment and question, while the overall is, again, very exciting and demonstrates progress, you know, the the subgroup results remain, at least to me, concerning. And I know a year ago when I reviewed these and I kind of asked some questions about, well, what's our plan? I felt like the response was a little bit of rising tide will lift all ships. And I mean, we've seen that because there has been progress within almost all of those subgroups. People are performing better than they were previously, but there is still that very substantial gap. And so do we have thoughts on not just how to continue making progress, but how to close the gap in these subgroups?
Yeah, I I think that was really what I was trying to outline in those slides that were a summary. And I'll go back and reiterate those. For reading, we have to continue to focus on making our Tier One instruction as strong as possible. So that's supporting all students. We need to, for those students that are in those subgroups where we see half of those students are falling in the yellow and the red, when I think about MTSS, we need to make sure our interventions are as strong as possible. And this is why we're focused on improving those. So we're working on implementing Bookworms intensive. We are working on getting materials for Tier Two math. Right now, our interventionists have their own resources. We're getting our, we're going to get high-quality materials for that. And for middle school, we are focused on Tier One for ELA right now. We're going to move into improving Tier Two, but right now we're starting with Tier One and all staff. So I think that those are the items that are on the work plan right now to support students in those subgroup areas that are in that yellow and red bands.
So obviously, one of our key roles as a board is resourcing. Is there anything that we aren't doing that can be done to accelerate that work?
Top of mind, I can't give you an exact answer to that, but I appreciate the the question. And I think I I think those are things that I, as I continue to come to the board throughout the year and talk about the progress on our goals, I think that's the place where I I bring answers to your question, right?
Then the very final thing I had is we aren't the only district that has seen challenging demographic shifts when it comes to the the mix of students that we're needing to educate. And I know we have people who are much better at mining the the school report card data than I or probably any of us are. Are there districts that we see that have the similar demographics and demographic shifts but don't see the same achievement gaps where maybe we can do some targeted benchmarking to say what's working for you?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I think we have the ability to do that when the school report card comes out because there's this section on the school report card that's called the performance scatter plots. And what the performance scatter plots is, is you, it's all the school districts in the state of Illinois, and it puts District 200. And we can filter by the different subgroups and see who's falling above us. And I think that that's the opportunity to dive in and start to have some conversations with school districts. But I don't think I'm going to be able to say this school district's going to have all the answers. I think I'm going to be able to say this school district has similar demographics for the Hispanic population. We should probably talk to them to talk about if we have similar Hispanic population or, you know, similar low income. So I'm probably going to have to look at different districts depending on the population. But I think the performance scatter plots will help.
Thank you.
Just one one little piece to add to that. I don't remember if we shared this with the board or not, but there's an organization called Stanford Children. It's a statewide advocacy organization that does a lot of work focused on that. And and just we'll share that about a month ago, they reached out and asked to spend about an hour with Melissa, actually understanding our playbook because our data, both in the aggregate, especially for ELA, but especially tied to our subpopulations, was actually far exceeding what they're seeing in terms of growth from from others. So not not saying there isn't stuff that we can learn from from others, but but just even as we've started to dive into some of those scatter plots early, we actually have some pretty strong performance out of a number of 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 our subgroups. Doesn't mean we can't do better, but especially as you look at it relative to to others, there there are some places where I think we can see some, but there are a couple of subgroups where we've got, again, doesn't mean we've closed the gap, but but I, you know, I think closing the gap around just aggregate like meets or exceeds levels. I I don't know that you're ever going to entirely, right, close a gap because not every student comes to the starting line in the same place, right? It's can you close that growth gap by ensuring that if a student is behind when, you know, they're they struggle at the the starting place, are we seeing more than a year's worth of growth? That's what I think we can do and then hopefully see, you know, that shrink over time. But it's, I think if there's any district that suddenly that achievement gap like wiped out in a single year, I think you'd have reason to suspect how that that happened, right? It's just not, I think, a super realistic target.
I was just going to comment that we've seen an awful lot of data here this evening. And my overall take is that we are looking good overall. And where we're not looking quite so good, we're addressing it, which is important to me. Help me understand in terms of interventions, are we intervening intervening within the classroom where the student is? Or are kids being taken out of a classroom to work with as a group for intervention?
Yeah, if the students are in what we consider a Tier Two or a Tier Three intervention, that is in a small group with a specialist, whether that's a math coach, a special education staff member. But our coaches also go into the classroom to support students during Tier One instruction as well. So students may go out for an intervention, but they must may also get support during the core instruction, too.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I want to follow up on that with John. So maybe I'm actually going to come back to that because it's going to be my, kind of my takeaway from everything and I want to ask some questions first. So in trying to figure out the growth potential score, particularly with ELA for the IAR growth potential, it looks like we dropped from last year quite a bit. So I was trying to figure that out and I went and looked on the report card from last year and it looks like, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but it looks like we seem to have kids who are at the higher levels growing and kind of pulling us up, whereas like the did not meet section of kids don't seem to be showing that growth and kind of pulling that growth down. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Well, the way it's calculated is every individual student's score. So even if a student was in the red and they moved over to the orange, that is counted in the growth.
Correct. But I feel like what I'm seeing, and I think this unfortunately may be last year's report card that I'm looking at, it is, what I'm seeing from last year's report card is that it was that group in the red that still isn't making the same amount of growth that you would expect and that group on the upper side is making a lot of growth still. Like so that discrepancy between those two ends seem to be.
Yeah. And I think when you talk about that group in the red, I'm going to call out two types of students that fall in that red category that are probably not going to show the growth. Multilingual learners that aren't able to read that assessment because they don't have enough language.
But their year of growth, I mean, that growth is measuring like from one starting point to another. So they might start lower, but they'll still grow.
Agreed. But if they don't, if they are like a level one or a level two, they still can't read the grade level assessment. So you're right, we do see growth with multilingual learners, but if they are at those like early language stages, they're probably not going to move much. And the other group is our students that have an IEP that are instructional programs and we wish could take the DLM assessment, but we're limited to 1% on that. Those are two groups of students that fall in that red category. But I do think we need to strengthen our tier three interventions so that students that don't fall in those categories are growing more.
Correct. So you made me think of something. So do we know how many kids fall out of that 1%? Is it the DSM?
How many students?
So the kids who don't, because I think you said it was 60 students who are allowed to take it, that's 1%. But say we have 120 students that would be eligible to take that, but because it's more than 1%, are we making them take the IAR then?
Yeah, I will tell you very specifically, I recall being at an Essentials PLC at Monroe last year, talking with them about electives. And it got, it was right after the testing window and those teachers were talking about their essential teach, students who couldn't take the DLM but have to take the IAR test. And we had to put it in front of them and it's like not-
So I think that's so inappropriate for those students to make them go through that. I just think that's, do we, we, we force them to?
We, we are required to present the test to them, but how they perform in that moment, they may not spend a lot of time on it.
I understand. I think maybe at the state level, there should be some advocacy for that because that just seems absolutely inappropriate to pretend that, yeah, I agree with that at all. So in also looking through all of this, noticing that FastBridge and IAR, there's just such a discrepancy in reading, we're under, like FastBridge is under what IAR has done, math it's over, like I, yep, that I don't.
That's why I, slide one, I, I think it's really important for us to understand, they are different assessments. And they are reporting performance in different ways too. They're not, they're, you should know this too, there is no linking study done between FastBridge and IAR.
Because FastBridge is normative data.
Yeah.
I think, just think it's interesting that they're opposite like that.
Mm-hmm.
And trying to tease that out.
That's why, that's why I really highlighted on that slide too, the use of the data in our system as we have gotten to know FastBridge better is different. Like we use the IAR assessment to really drive conversations about school improvement where I have schools looking at how students do on individual standards and they are targeting. We are working on fractions at fifth grade this year because we know that that's the area that our students scored the lowest. But then when we look at FastBridge, we can't get that level of data. It's more about which of our kids need to be in an intervention. It's hard concept, really hard concept, but it's, they're really for different purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure there was one other thing before I, just to clarify, so any student in FastBridge that falls in the red or orange is getting tier two or three intervention?
Unless they're receiving special education services or they're a multilingual learner and they're working on their language first.
Okay. But it's just the red and orange from FastBridge data, not IAR data?
It's the red and the yellow, yeah.
The red and yellow, yes.
But in, honestly, the students in the yellow, we look at multiple forms of data. So you may have a student who has an anomaly piece of data that falls in that yellow range, but every other assessment says they're perfectly fine. So.
Okay. Makes sense. So last thing, Eric asked, like, is there something more we could do? Like, is there something more that we can do to, to help with that gap, to help with any of the discrepancies that we have? And then John was talking about specialists coming in and out. And it seems to me, and especially at the younger ages, that it's great that specialists are coming in and out. It's great that we have math coaches coming in, awesome. But I think with the behaviors that we've seen, so this is my takeaway from all of this and kind of speaking a little bit to special ed as well, I think we have behaviors disrupting lessons. And I, I think if we had more hands in the room, like if we had more aides that we put in place that aren't necessarily specialists, but that can be there when this arises and that, I just think we're asking a lot. And it's something I think maybe as a board we can consider. Considering what we pay the aides, it's not a huge expense. I just can't imagine being a teacher with 28 kids in the class and the behavior's going on and boom, the lesson is out the window kind of thing. So I'm not sure why we don't seem to use more aide support. So that's my little plug for that. Thank you.
All right. So first of all, thank you. I sent a lot of questions in advance and you covered almost all of them in your presentation. So I appreciate that you weaving that in. So it makes my job easier. I just have two questions left. The first, and I might've missed this, can you describe a little bit more, when you say FastBridge is a universal screener, what that means and what it screens for and what specific types of?
Yeah. So it is assessing for risk, for risk of reading difficulty. So in K1, there are a number of subtests that are administered that are about foundational skills. And then in grades two through eight, it's called A-reading, and we are really looking as well at a student's fluency rate. Those are indicators of having risk for reading difficulties. And that's where that idea of the universal screener being a dyslexia screener comes in for FastBridge.
And is using that as a screener typical for what our comparator districts do? Or do they use different screeners, more screeners?
We have, one of our comparable districts that use FastBridge and then some of the other comparable school districts use different screeners. There's different adaptive tests out there on the market.
May I ask a follow up on that one? So where they're using those different ones, are they administering those to all students? Because it would seem that the advantage of FastBridge here is since everyone's taking it, everyone is going through that screener. At the comparables where they use something different, is that only applied where there's a belief that there may be a learning difficulty?
I, I can only speak to the, a couple of the comparables because I network with them more, at least in two of those school districts. I know they're administering it as a universal screener. I haven't had conversations with all of them to answer that accurately, but so.
And then my second question was on the topic of multilingual learners and how to support them. I seem to recall a committee, the whole meeting late last year where we talked about we were going to look again into the research through EAB and if there were any new trends about how to best support them. I was just curious if we had learned anything from that and anticipated any changes?
Yeah. So, great question. So actually, Dr. Pueyo is actually working, utilizing our Monroe team because that's where a large population of our multilingual learners are. And we had at that point mentioned the newcomers in middle school. She's actually working with the Monroe team and an organization to dive deeper. And they're meeting multiple times a year to look at the best way to support newcomers at a middle school level. So that actually might be a really good follow-up in the future for the board of what they have learned and what adjustments may come from that programming experience.
Guys, two quick questions. We talked about early on fatigue being a factor. Any other factors rise to that level other than fatigue?
I also believe that we are going to start to look at communicating with families when we're giving the FastBridge assessment. We communicate with our families when we're giving the IAR assessment and let them know that they should be getting a good night's sleep and their Chromebook should be charged and all those things. We aren't doing that kind of communication when we give the FastBridge. And I think that's something that we should consider.
And then, did we, as we talked for comparative districts, do they see fatigue? Are there any other factors they've considered? Or when we do, can we explore that a little more?
I will, yes. I haven't had that conversation.
There's something, there's got to be something there, right?
Yeah.
And then last question is, just from a governance perspective, we talked about resource. Anything in the work plans that need to adjust for the, kind of the rest of the year or the work plans pretty much set and we're, we were on the right path, given the data you're seeing?
I think we identified the right work projects. I think I've given some guidance to my directors on some fine tuning in those areas. For example, with, I'll just give you one example, with tier two math intervention, I asked Dr. Moran to really secure instructional materials. I have had asked her to broaden that work to fine tune how we're doing progress monitoring, which we do in FastBridge, how we look at the progress monitoring, how we report that to families. So especially looking at our subgroup data. So I would say we have the right work projects. We have identified fine tuning with those. Actually, Mrs. Hanson's going to bring a few other work projects up that are connected to what she's presenting.
Okay. And then related to the work plans, if you think about our work plan cycle, we just kind of came out of that, had to be like two, three months ago, right, where we set the work plans? Given, given the data and the questions you've heard, should, is there a, for lack of a better word, should we be asking better questions about the gaps related to the work plans? Or did we, you know, I'm talking about our role as a board, right? Because we always talk about the gaps, but I remember having that same conversation when we were talking about the work plans, at least at, at the board level. And maybe we missed it, I don't know. Any thoughts on that? I see Eric kind of nodding a little bit. There's not really a question.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand the question fully.
Maybe it's more just me talking to our board, since it's committee of the whole, that maybe we need to be better talking about those gaps in relation to the work plans, right?
Well, and I almost, this is me thinking a little bit, is our cadence, that where in the annual board cycle, we, we have that work plan discussion? Are we maybe off kilter with this?
I don't, so, so we're asking a lot of gap questions now.
Yeah.
I just remember asking a lot of gap questions when we're looking at the work plans. That's all, as a board. It's just more, it's just a conversation with the board.
Yeah, I, I think so, just one observation on it. Rob, I think the question you're asking, maybe what Eric's responding to, so in our administration of the district, it would be very difficult if you as a governing board right now were having conversations right after you saw this data on what should our goals be for the year because we've started the year, right? Like it is, be really difficult to come in at this point, a quarter into the year and start giving our principals and then our staff guidance on, okay, by the way, this is the, the focus for this year. That really has to happen in a school year cycle. It, it's unfortunate probably that this data isn't like accessible and available to you right at the point in time which you're setting these because it would be easier to obviously ask questions and say, now, you know, again, I think you have to recognize from Melissa's side and her team's side that, you know, as they're informing those work projects, they're not just using like one point of data and a test score right from the state. It's informative and it helps to, to kind of guide information. She's looking at kind of all of the measures we have that point out the, the priorities. So I think actually what you're doing right now and the board has done is helpful. This is a good point in the year to say, you know, I heard the district say these were the priorities, right? Do, do these data points kind of affirm that we're focused on the right priorities and you're doing it? I just don't, I don't think there'd be a perfect cadence candidly to align it.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of timing. I was, I was just thinking about our level of scrutiny on gaps at work plan time.
I just don't know that you would have the kind of information that you would need from the governing board level to probably do that type of, I think it's easier for you to look at numbers and kind of ask those questions. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, and, and candidly, if you look at the breadth of those work plans, I wouldn't expect seven governing board members to have the kind of insight that our administrators that live that work on a, on a day-to-day basis. I mean, that's what informs the work plans and I'm not, I'm just not sure you'd-
You answered my question. It was, it was, it's a thoughtful question for us to consider, right?
Definitely fair.
Thanks.
Sorry, I thought of one more fairly tactical question. So, you know, Dr. Salagi's done a great job, I think, educating us on the reasons and the benefits of camp kinder, you know? And as you talked about the number of students who come in, especially in some of the subgroups where they are first coming into our schools, you know, later on, is there an opportunity to other districts do anything, kind of like a camp kinder for those older new arrivals to the district to, you know, over the summer leading into their attendance year or maybe even the summer after their first attendance year to do some catch-up work?
I don't have that answer to what other school districts are doing, but I think it's a conversation that we can entertain. Yeah. I do, I do want to just highlight Johnson School here. Johnson is a school that has, receives the most Title I dollars and I commend that staff because year over year, they utilize those Title I dollars and bring in many students over the summer for summer school. Year over year, many teachers at Johnson teach that program along with our extended day program that's funded through Title I at Johnson, which is just a huge kudos to that committed staff. So.
All right. Great, thank you. Our second, our second topic tonight is special education stakeholder engagement report. Dr. Schuler, would you like to introduce the topic?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you did. You did a good job of introducing it. How about, I'll just introduce Alexis Hanson, who is our executive director for special education. And she's really the one with, kind of in partnership with Melissa that has guided this process. I think the board expressed interest certainly this year in, in really capturing this- I think the board expressed interest certainly this year in really capturing this level of feedback to help guide her work. And I think in addition to just what you've seen, you know, we had a conversation with our team just this week and kind of asking Alexis the question of if this just really kinda helped her to have a better understanding of kind of the state of the department and the needs less than a quarter in. And I think it was a very helpful process, so. Hansen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. You're stealing my thunder because I wanted to share it.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you so much. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to be here tonight and to share the results from our stakeholder engagement opportunities. This has been a really helpful experience as somebody coming in new to the district to really uncover, you know, what our current state of special education is. Where are our strengths and where do we need to grow? So I just wanna say thank you for suggesting the opportunity to be able to engage with stakeholders, but then ultimately, thank you to everybody who participated. Because I had so much staff, and you'll see my numbers on the different slides, that participated in not only the survey, but the listening sessions that we had, as well as to the parents who took time out of their day to come and to, you know, participate in our activity for those listening sessions. It's been very helpful and hopefully, if you're tuning in, you'll see a piece of the conversation that you were a part of in what's presented tonight. I have to, microphone, papers, clicker. So just to kind of ground us in the purpose for the work, really as somebody new coming into the department, this was an opportunity for us to analyze the strengths and the needs of our department, really making sure that we're hearing from stakeholder groups, which is in alignment with the Vision 2026 tactic of engaging our community on an ongoing basis to determine its priorities and foster partnerships. Similarly to Melissa's presentation, I'll be stepping through some guiding questions tonight to walk us through all of the information. So the first thing that we're gonna talk about is how was that stakeholder feedback collected? When we look at the stakeholder engagement specific to parents and guardians, we did send out a survey at the beginning of September through the district newsletter out to all parents and guardians. And you can see that we had 240 responses from our parents who have students that are participating in district programming. And then we had 29 participants from our parents who have students that are in out-of-district programming. And again, we made sure that that survey was available in multiple languages. And then for our listening sessions, we had met with our principals and had asked our principals to help support us in selecting some families that would help match our demographics for our special education population. And from that information and sending out those invites, we were able to move forward with four listening sessions. We ran them during the day as well as in the evening to try to accommodate, you know, everyone's schedules, holding three of them here at the SSD and one over at Johnson. And so we had 38 parents and guardians that participated in those listening sessions. When we look at the stakeholder engagement from the staff side, the survey that went out to staff at the beginning of October through our curriculum update yielded 441 total responses. When I looked at some ratio information on that, that's approximately one out of every three staff members, so that was strong feedback that we received. When we look at the listening sessions, I have listened to a lot of our staff members. I've talked to 243 of them. So that has come through from one-on-one conversations, our department meetings with our related service providers, small groups coming together by level, and then of course, having some specific conversations with our essentials program, given how large it is as well as early childhood and transition. So now we're gonna dig into what are those insights that we can gather specifically from the parents and guardians first. So when we look at the survey that went out to families, we had an open-ended question that just asked parents and guardians to identify what they found to be the most beneficial to their child's growth and progress. And so when we analyzed that information for some top trends, these are the five trends that came through. So really looking at individualized and specialized supports, strong relationship and collaboration, speech and language services was really high, and then the others as well. When we then analyzed our survey questions to try and identify our areas of strength, we did look at any of our favorable responses that were over 75%. So I know there was a question about how we took into consideration the areas of strength. So on this, any favorable response that had above 75% was seen as a strength. And so these four areas were the areas that were identified. A lot of this really sits within the IEP process, feeling like they're an equal partner with teachers and professionals, feeling like they have a clear understanding of our evaluation process, and being able to be involved in decisions about their child's services. When we analyzed our questions to look for areas of improvement, these were the top areas that were identified, communication and collaboration, training opportunities for staff, not just special education staff, all staff, inclusion opportunities, addressing the shortage of teaching assistants, and a sense of belonging in the school community. I do wanna highlight, I know parent engagement in the IEP process is also on this slide. And when you think about the slide that I just walked through with all of the things that talked about the strengths with the IEP process, it kinda seems like it doesn't fit. So just to kinda dig into that one, the way that that question was worded on the parent survey was that we asked parents to please indicate how many of their concerns and recommendations were addressed at their last IEP meeting. And so when we looked at the favorable responses on that, it just came under 75%. It actually was at 73%, but that's why it ended up on this slide in comparison to the other, just to give some clarity. So after we, so we actually provided the parents and guardians the survey first, and then we were able to start to look at that information that was coming in from the survey to think through the structure for the listening sessions. And so as we were starting to identify some of the information, we were able to then tailor it to the topics that we knew we needed some additional context on. When we met for the parent and guardian listening sessions, we made sure that those were 90 minutes in length. We did walk through a protocol. The parents actually were in small groups with one another, engaging in discussions while we kind of walked around the room to understand the things that they were sharing. But so really, these were the areas where in the listening sessions, we asked some more probing questions about strengths and weaknesses and opportunities. So in that first area for improvement of communication and collaboration, these were the top themes that came through from that listening session. The parents had shared that they really would like some more ongoing, frequent, informal updates. A lot of the conversation was about how they have their annual review meeting and we have parent-teacher conferences, but depending upon the timing of those pieces, sometimes that happens around the same time of the year, and then they feel like they're not getting those frequent conversations about how things are going. They also wanted to make sure that, a big topic of conversation was about improving communication when kids are changing building levels. So meaning when students are transitioning from early childhood to kindergarten, when we're transitioning from fifth to sixth grade. Specifically, those two areas were highlighted as an opportunity for us to really improve our communication. Another area of improvement that we dug into a bit more was within the concept of facilitation of IEP meetings. The themes that arose from that conversation was just ensuring that teams are seeing and recognizing the value of parental input at that table. The other thing is in special education, we have a lot of acronyms and we have a lot of legal jargon that comes out. And while we understand as teachers, you know, that educational jargon, that can definitely be overwhelming for families. So being mindful about that type of information and making sure we're taking the time to explain. And then in the context of regular updates for this bullet point, this was more about, you know, as you're stepping into that very first IEP meeting, there is a lot of information that comes to parents. And so being able to have the opportunity to talk to somebody and have some more information about how to be prepared for what happens, the number of people that sit at the table, the type of discussions, that came up as a theme of something that we could work on. In talking about creating a sense of belonging, the themes that arose from this really do speak more to our students who are accessing our instructional programs. A big part of the conversation was how are we thinking about equity in accessing school-wide events? So that was something that they wanted to work on, as well as how are we ensuring that we are providing education and awareness, not only for the staff in the buildings where instructional programs are housed, but also to the community at large and to the students within the building? And then the other piece that arose in this section was, parents were very gracious and thankful for the opportunity to engage in the listening session. And so being able to have the opportunity to hear from other parents, listen to their journey as it, you know, depending upon what level their child is at, came through wanting to have more opportunities for support networks for parents. So now I'm shifting back to the survey. Within the survey, we had a question that just asked the type of programming that their child was accessing. So these next couple of slides are about parents and guardians' responses for students who are in out-of-district placements. And so there were open-ended questions, and this first open-ended question just asked what they felt like was most beneficial for their student's progress. So really, in terms of those out-of-district placements, they know that their child has access to specialized therapies and support services and are feeling like they're getting the individualized attention, and there's that understanding there of the unique needs that their child has. And then, on the other question which asked what were some areas for improvement, this really came, the things that came as trends, I would say, fall more on the district side is as we're approaching that decision for an out-of-district placement, wanting to feel a sense of involvement in that decision-making process for their child when that's the recommendation at the IEP meeting, as well as feeling a part of the district even though their child is not accessing a district school building. And again, making sure we're addressing parents' concerns and recommendations. Okay, now we're gonna switch gears from parents over to staff. So the staff survey went out in October through the curriculum update. And within the staff survey, we also had staff members identify their roles. And so a part of that was identifying if there were a teaching assistant so that we could really tailor the questions to their role specifically and get further information. So when we looked at the classified staff portion of the survey that our teaching assistants had shared, these were the strengths that were identified, feeling like they have opportunities for professional learning, there's effectiveness of the training that they've received, they feel connected with the work that they're doing within their building team, and they feel valued. Oh, I should also add, for the classified staff survey, we did look at over 80% favorable responses in some of the things that they shared. And then for challenges that they face, the staffing and support needs came through with the teaching assistants, as well as wanting to ensure communication and feeling integrated within the full school community. And given the changes that we see in our learners, just in general, more opportunities for training for behavioral management. Still looking at the survey, but now shifting to certified staff members and what they had identified. So when we analyzed the certified staff questions to look for areas of strength, these were all favorable responses of 70% or above. Really, it's mostly 80%. There was just one question that fell below that and we included it in strengths. But the strengths that pulled through was staff have an understanding of their role in the IEP process. They feel like they're developing IEPs that are targeting progress on grade-level standards, and they feel like their input is valued at that IEP table. When analyzing the survey for some areas that would need our attention, we then took that information and looked further from what we heard from the listening sessions to provide some more context. So there are five areas that we're gonna walk through that the certified staff have identified as areas for attention. The first one is opportunities for collaboration. So we had engaged for the listening sessions for staff members utilizing the SWOT protocol, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, which is just different than the protocol we used for parents. So you'll see that, I'm not going, given the amount of information that's on the slide, I'm not gonna read every bullet to you, but I'll try and highlight some of the overall themes that we're seeing. So when we look at strengths for collaboration, it's clear that we believe that that exists at the building level and that we believe that we're able to support students' needs. When we go over to opportunities, we can see that staff would like to see an increase in collaboration across levels and departments district-wide. When we look at the area for improvement of communication, when we look at the strengths, we see that they feel like there are positive communication and collaboration happening within their individualized departments to support problem-solving and feel like there's effective communication among staff to help support student learning outcomes. In terms of some weaknesses that were identified, really looking at feeling like there's some insufficient communication that's happening across our various levels. So really feeling like there's just inconsistent communication from building to building, potentially from building levels, so really look at that more district-wide practices for communication. The next area for improvement is professional learning. When we look at strengths, it was identified that we have experienced and skilled staff members that have longevity within the district, which is always great, that we have great people doing great work who want to continue to work in D200. When we looked at the weaknesses, really we're looking for a need for some consistency across the district in training and processes. And so I do just kinda wanna highlight, because I think it's wordy in that first bullet point where it talks about inconsistent messaging and professional development, really within the listening sessions, we heard from multiple departments and levels, just a need for some consistent processes across the district, consistent guidance across programs, and more consistent professional development. That's the key takeaway. And then opportunities really highlights the same thing, more targeted training opportunities for staff dependent upon their role, more professional development opportunities, and mentorship. Our next area for improvement was digging into access to materials and resources. So when we look at the themes from the staff listening sessions, it's great to share that a strength was the availability of that consistent core instructional materials that's being provided to students and that it's improving our students' performance. When we shift over to the weaknesses in this section, it's really now, when we look at our special education interventions, the resources aren't aligned with the core instruction and need to be updated. There was an additional open-ended question on the survey for staff where we asked them to identify any additional challenges that they face in their role, and these were some of the common challenges that were identified. The staffing and support needs, again, that came specific with teaching assistants, time management in their workloads, the curriculum and instructional challenges, which is really talking about those special education intervention programs, communication and collaboration, and then inclusive practices.
Alexis?
Yes.
What was the challenge with inclusive practices? Like what?
Yes, so from the staff perspective, talking more about if we are gonna talk about increasing opportunities for inclusive practices, taking into consideration the staffing and resources that need to be provided to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now moving into, based on all this information that we've gathered, what are the next steps that we need to take moving forward? Something that I really wanted to highlight because it was coming, every session I started to talk to towards the end and people would share information, I was like, okay, there it is again, there it is again. We had a lot of alignment between our stakeholder groups, which is really clearly indicated here within our top trends, across parents and staff members across levels and departments, really looking at improving our communication and collaboration, increasing our training and support, inclusion opportunities, including the staffing for, addressing that age shortage as well. The pieces where we didn't have alignment really are based on the individual role in your perspective as you entered into that conversation. Our parents want to have increased parent engagement within the IEP process, which is totally understanding, and our staff members really wanna look at their time management and workload and curriculum and instruction. and workload and curriculum and instruction. On this slide outlining the priorities for this year specifically, so on the left, these were the items that were on this year's work plan from the beginning. So I know Melissa had spoke to it as well. We really want to begin to, we're going to begin to review the process for elementary resource as well as our PISA instructional program and looking at the intervention resources that we're using with special education students. In addition to that, there's talking about expanding elective opportunities at the middle school, which will help foster inclusivity for our essentials program specifically. And then through the work that we've been doing with Bookworms, supporting the implementation of enhanced core reading instruction. Based upon the feedback that we received through this engagement opportunity, there are things that we want to be able to add as additional focuses for this school year. And so the first one is being we really need to review and begin to enhance planning for when students are changing building levels. So again, that's when we're talking about that ECE to kindergarten, that fifth to sixth grade, that eighth to ninth grade. Also, increasing professional learning for the entire organization. And then building opportunities for school and community engagement for our students that are in district, maybe in an instructional program, not in their homeschool, as well as for our students who are attending out-of-district placements. The following two slides are going to highlight the department's future priorities based on the feedback. I do want to share that it's important to note that these priorities are not in any specific order and are things that would be, need to be addressed over the next several years. So really, we need to continue to expand our professional learning opportunities for all staff and in looking at doing that, really talking about increasing department meetings specifically for our special education teachers, and then how can we leverage institute days for that professional learning. Also reviewing staffing allocations and workload processes, and then establishing a framework for ongoing department-wide communication, because communication came out so frequently, how can we really structure a framework for that so we're giving consistent communication? And conducting IEP training for staff. I know that there was a question that had been posed here just about like what is anticipated for the future priorities when referencing that reviewing staffing allocations? You know, is someone stepping in new, the first thing I really need to do is build my general understanding of how that has looked in the past and understand that to figure out where we need to go. But we do also need to address the growing needs in our instructional programs. And then I also think there will be things that will come to the forefront of the conversation through that resource review and the PISA review. And then I also just want to add, there was another question that was shared about addressing the aid shortage, and I see that kind of in that reviewing staffing allocations as well. So the question was really like, how are we doing right now with addressing that shortage? We have currently prioritized filling our highest need positions first, and they are filled. We have had to utilize contract staff to help support us within that work. From the conversations I've had, I'm excited to share that we are down in the number of positions that still haven't been filled from previous years, and we're also down in the number of the contract agencies that we're using in comparison to previous years. I really appreciate the partnership with Mr. Biskin as well as Mrs. Kuntz as we've really worked through this and will continue to work through this. And then this next slide has more future priorities based on feedback. Really, from the conversations, it's clear that it will be important to craft a vision statement for special education within the district and really being able to start messaging that. We also, again, need to enhance that process for students as they're changing building levels. When we talk about our instructional programs, being able to promote more programming transparency, thinking about how we can create some comprehensive program guides to help share more information about our instructional programs, how we can improve our department websites, as well as increase that community awareness and engagement as it pertains to instructional programming. We also are going to work to increase the partnership between our multilingual support and special education services because we do have students who are duly qualified. And then it was clear from our families that they really value the opportunity to connect with one another, so looking at forming a special education parent advisory council. I know there was a question just regarding the follow-up on listening sessions and talking through a reasonable cadence for listening sessions. I think that that special education parent advisory council is going to provide just a natural opportunity for some consistent opportunities to connect with parents. And then given the things that we've identified on our priorities for this year and our work plan, and that that will start to get on the dashboard, we're going to have some natural feedback opportunities with staff as we're looking at our progress on the things that we're tackling. I am a fast talker.
All right, board, any questions?
Well, do reverse order and I'll go first this time. So thank you again for addressing my questions in your presentation. Just a few more on, I don't know because you're new if you've had the ability to have this information, but I do know that we do stay interviews. Is there anything that emerges from those, different things that we can do to attract those vacant aid positions?
It's a great question. I do not have the information as it pertains to stay interviews.
I can, I can interject. So last year, the stay interview process focused on people that had been in the district. And I think what we gleaned from the questions that we had asked was that TAs want to feel connected to not only the people that they work with, but the work itself. Obviously, what goes along with that is pay, things of that sort, but I think talking with a lot of the TAs, they understand though, that especially in those high-need areas, that it is a challenge to get the right people because you have to have a real connection with that, with that work. But I just think from what we gleaned from it is that whatever building they're in, they value the fact that people value their work.
That's helpful, thank you. And then this was really, really helpful, and I think one thing I've struggled with as a board member is how do we have that oversight of something that's so individualized? And it's been really tough to try and figure that out in this listening session, and the feedback was really helpful in that. I'm just curious, taking advantage of that you are new to our district from your experiences with prior districts, is there anything else that we as a board can or should do to have that oversight of an area that is so individualized? Anything we're missing?
That's a great question. Honestly, I feel like just the fact that it was suggested right out of the gates upon my arrival, that this is something that I should look into based on what you were hearing from the coffees with the board, is a great start. I've never seen anything done like this before. It was, it was a lot of work and a lot of listening, but it was really great and really is going to help serve as a roadmap to really understand, you know, the direction for where we need to go. So I don't necessarily feel like there's anything missing. I really feel like that was a great opportunity and a great start.
Something we could think about a little bit, and I'm not sure what the right answer is, and it's not for tonight to answer, but when we wanted to make social emotional a priority for this board, we had more frequent updates, right? We just, and it was topical, it wasn't the same thing each time. So maybe we find a way to work cadence in to our community of holes or somehow that, you know, just keeps the conversation going, right? It keeps it a priority for the board, it's important for us. We said we, I remember we said we wanted to be kind of the gold standard, right? I don't remember when we said that, but it may have been during one of our work sessions, right? And so I think that's part of it, is that more, that visibility, more frequent update.
Rob, I think that's a wonderful idea, like having a more frequent update, and I appreciate all of your work, Alexis. I think, I think there's, both target groups like have been wanting to be heard, you know, and so listening and hearing what they have to say, I think, can only help, and I hope that we continue to do that. I noticed that you put the parent advisory council kind of on like future, a future priority, but I think there's a lot of value in getting that going pretty quickly, especially while you still have a group of parents who are somewhat engaged, so I think that...
Even if it's not perfect, right?
Right, yeah, nothing has to be perfect, and you know, you can even have some staff like doing that. I think mostly parents, you know, they know their kids and they want to be heard, you know, and teachers know their thing and they want to work together, but sometimes there's these roadblocks put up and people just need to listen and talk, and so I think, I love that you did that, thank you. Two questions. One, I'm curious why, if we have any thought or guess as to why there was a drop in the number of IEPs from 2019 to 2024? Is it just, there's nothing that drives that or?
I can't identify anything specific to, to answer that question for you.
I think I was more surprised, I wouldn't have expected there to be that drop, so I thought maybe there was something, maybe there was some new RTI thing that was picking up some kids or something, so, okay.
Or is there, is there an increase in 504s across the same period? Like, are we seeing a shift there?
I don't have those numbers, those aren't as easy to track, but it's a good question. Yeah, we can look into it.
Do we know, and this might just be an interesting, not probably for tonight, but for future, I mean, to really analyze that, you'd almost have to look at it by like disability category to see, I mean, obviously, the pandemic did impact the ability to deliver some services, right? Like, I think speech-language services is very difficult. I'm not sure if that impacted identification of students that perhaps were receiving certain levels of services, but it'd be an interesting deep dive to understand it in the future.
And then just last comment, I love that you talked to the staff. I, and I hope this is a new kind of like going forward that we have that communication. I worry sometimes, like I hear things here and there from staff that they don't speak up when they think they have a need or when they know that they feel a need, like, and I have talked to various staff members and said, if you don't speak up, we don't know as a board. I've been very clear in speaking as an individual board member, but saying like you have a board that is very supportive of special education, but if there are needs, we need to know them. So I'm just saying that more for people who might be listening because it's frustrating when you hear complaints, but like, we don't know that. So I think I'm very passionate about providing for all of our students, and special ed has a special place in my heart, so we should be providing what is needed, so, thank you.
You mentioned 240 responses from parents and guardians. What does that represent out of a total? What, is that...
Yeah, so is approximately 15% of our parents are looking at a ratio like one out of every seven.
Okay. Were you satisfied with that, or is that disappointingly low?
You know, I don't know what, I don't know what to compare it to from previous surveys within the district, but I was pretty pumped as I was watching the numbers come in. I thought that over, you know, 250 total, right, if you take in the out-of-district, was solid, you know, information coming through, so I was happy.
And when there is a meeting between the parent and the teacher relative to an IEP, EIP, IEP, is there any expectation that's set up ahead of time? Is there something to tell the parent what to expect in that meeting?
So I think that that kind of came through from the feedback that we received, is that parents would like some more preparation prior to the IEP meeting to really help support that. So that's something that we're going to have to look through and work towards with our staff.
Yeah, because coming in and not knowing what to expect can be, one, a waste of time, and two, frustrating and confusing, so something, some guidelines ahead of time as to what's going to be covered and how, I think, would be useful.
And it's a lot of information, especially for the first one, so...
I think we do a terrific job with our special education. From what I've seen, I think we've got room for improvement, but we do well. Thank you.
Any other questions, board?
Okay, just two quick comments. I think Angela brought up this special education parent advisory council. I like that idea, you know, giving parents more voice. In my mind, I think CAC for special ed, so if the board needs to do something to maybe make that happen sooner than the future, let us know.
I love the idea of a CAC for special ed. The idea of a CAC for special ed, I like that idea.
I think all parents want their voice heard, but these parents have a different, my experience has been a different level of engagement that is necessary, so. I like that idea. The other thing, you know, a couple of people, teachers in my teacher group are within the special ed field, and I, one thing that kind of always resonates for me from those conversations is just how hard it is to balance and the workload with the different needs of students, so many students, some of them are in different schools, some parents are much more engaged in the process, and that's, that's fine, but it's just so hard to make sure that all the students get the attention they need, so that's just, just passing that along is one of the challenges I hear consistently. So I think this is a great start, you know, I'm glad we did this, thanks for taking it on, but this is something we keep hearing about. I shouldn't say we keep hearing about, we've, we've heard about it maybe on a little bit more regular basis recently, so I think this is a good, you know, new, new kind of momentum building through an important topic that maybe is never the front-page headlines, right?
Yeah, I appreciate the parents coming to the coffees. That was, that was a lot of the genesis, right? And Angela facilitated some of that, you actually invited some people to come, which was helpful, I thought that was great, and it continued the conversations. Thank you. All right. Fantastic, that's it. We have no public comments tonight, so there be no further action to come before the board an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Paulson. You a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's adjourned, thank you. Good night.